Good evening. If you guys could please find your seat, we have a little special agenda tonight. We're gonna start with the pledge and the invocation, and then I will be giving the State of the City address before we move into our council meeting tonight. So at this time, it's a pleasure to ask the Girl Scout troop eighteen forty, eighteen four six zero, led by Haley White and Jennifer Zebly, to come forward and give us the pledge of allegiance. You would stand? Thank you, good job.
Thank you.
If you'd like to remain standing for the invocation, you're welcome to do so. And at this time, it's an honor to ask Ms. Reverend Sandra Henry to come and lead us in invocation.
Let us pray. Gracious Creator God, in whom we live and move and have our being, we give you thanks tonight for this time together. We give you thanks for these people who have come to, to celebrate our city, the coolest small town in America. And we just pray, Lord, that tonight, as, as they begin deliberations and meet, that you would guide this mayor and council and these leaders with your spirit, that you would give them wisdom, and that you would enable them to give their very best to, to this meeting and to all the deliberations that are being made. Father, we lift up those who put their lives on the line for us every day, and we thank you for those. And we just ask that you would bless this whole, all of our leaders, and that you would be with them in a very special way, all who serve our community. Thank you, Lord, and we make our prayer in your precious name. Amen.
So, good evening. Thank you all for coming out on rainy night, and tonight is a great honor and privilege to deliver my first State of the City address. I want to thank you all for showing up, either here at City Hall or those of you watching on Facebook Live. Your interest in, in the city of Canton has never been more appreciated or important. We all know that living in an increasingly connected world, thanks to social media and our smartphones, that it seems that we're more connected but increasingly isolated from our own community at times. We also know that division and rhetoric, combative rhetoric, seem to be the norm these days. There are places in our country where people and leaders across the spectrum cannot agree on anything, places so polarized by those who routinely fill the air with smog of antagonism, they refuse to see the common ground on which we all stand. You probably know a place or two like that. Luckily, the city of Canton is not one of those places. Like those of you here tonight, our citizens, leaders, city staff, and public safety officers show up on a daily basis to make our city a better place to live, play, work, and serve. We show up and come together to face challenges. We show up and come together to celebrate our successes. We show up and come together to mourn our losses, and tonight, we show up and come together to move Canton forward. As I said before, I know we will move too fast for some, too slow for others, but I can assure you, we'll move forward in a strategic and thoughtful manner. Moving forward requires us to leverage all of our assets to their full potential, assets from our past, present, and future. There's no interest or value in becoming like another town, for it's our unique character and sense of place that makes Canton truly special, and really the most livable city in metro Atlanta. Now it's our job to show up, work together, and reimagine a city who, where everyone is truly invited, healthy, prosperous, safe, and most of all, happy to live in Canton. So let me make a, take a few minutes to talk about where Canton is, is today, and how we're, what we're doing today, and how we're gonna work together to design our own destiny in the days and months ahead. After all, this is a State of the City address, so let me assure you, the state of our city is strong and moving forward. So in the past year, we've had a lot of recognition, and I'm not gonna touch on every single thing tonight, because I don't want you to be here all night, and we do have a council meeting and executive session tonight, so we do like our council members to eat on occasion, so. But I want to share some of the highlights with you from the past year. In two thousand nine, we, nineteen, we were named one of the, were named Georgia Trends and GMA's Live, Work, and Play City for large cities in the state of Georgia. Imagine that, we are in large city category. We are named in the top five main streets in America, in the entire, in the entire country. We were number five in the main streets in America. The Mill on Etowah was voted the Development Project of the Year by the Georgia Economic Development Association. It beat out large projects such as the, you know, projects out of Atlanta and other places in the state. And the Jones Building received the best facade restoration in Georgia from the state as well. Of course, we all know the Mill on Etowah is underway. It's truly gonna become, help Canton become even a further destination, and you're just gonna be blown away with what's in store and what they're doing down there. Under Finance and Utilities, we had some great successes, starting with our debt reduction. We continue to reduce our debt that we've been doing the past few years. Our outstanding balances were reduced from thirty-one point eight million to twenty-eight point eight million, another three million dollars in reduction just last year alone. The remaining debt is all on water and sewer fund related. We also paid off all the remaining YMCA funds, bonds. We had investment returns over, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, thanks to the great work of our CFO, Mr. Nathan Ingram, and his team. We completed a water wastewater rate study, which positions us to be able to finance our wastewater treatment expansion project coming up. And we also implemented a new occupational tax system, which really brings all of our business and business licenses into the new era, new decade, and, and really makes it fair for all businesses, small and large, especially on the small side. Taxes, our two thousand nineteen mileage rate was five point four, the lowest in twenty-five years. The citizens of Canton still enjoy the lowest mileage rate in Cherokee County of any city, so we're very proud of that, and we'll be working to maintain that and reputation, and I know this council is very dedicated to keeping taxes low. Main Street and Downtown continues to do a great job in our ongoing efforts to revitalize Main Street. We've had the largest First Friday ever in our, in our history of First Fridays. Those of you that attended the last couple, we had, I think, over seventy-five hundred attendees at those, just amazing crowds. Everyone found a place to park, no one complained. Everyone had a great time, and dancing in the streets, enjoying the music and fellowship, and it was just really, really wonderful events. Our farmer's market consistently had over fifty vendors and farmers and food stalls every weekend, some, some weekends we had over, well over sixty every weekend, so it was great. We're expecting the same turnout this, this, this spring and summer. We revamped Christmas in Canton, I know I saw a lot of you guys there. We had a wonderful new tree and great events, and sleigh rides, and reindeer, and all, and snow machines, and all those really great things. It was really a wonderful event. And we had new date night movies in Canton Theater. Saw all you guys making out in the crowd there, so. Those are just a few things that Main Street and Downtown did, but it was really, really just a great, wonderful year for downtown Canton. Parks and Recreation, we continue to be very proud of our, our parks, and I think, again, it's one of the things that really sets City Canton apart and makes it truly a great place to, to live and play. We had our first Canton River Rock Summer Concert Series, which were great. We're expanding that this year, we're adding concert series to that. We hosted thirty-eight running events in our parks, sixty-nine concerts and festivals, and we added a new parking area at Heritage Park to, to give our, our residents new places to park and enjoy our trails and our parks. Building and Development, we had four hundred and fifty-three new single-family home permits in two thousand nineteen, four hundred and twenty-five new business licenses. We completed seventeen thousand six hundred and eighty-nine inspections. So we can see our, our building department people running around looking tired, it really explains why. They do a great job, and, and I don't know how they keep up with it, but they do. We began a very exciting initiative, I'm really excited about Marietta Road, some of you know it's Sunnyside. We, we got a community initiative grant from the Georgia Placemaking Collaborative. We began that this year, it's a three-year program. We're working to reimagine Sunnyside, Marietta Road, from, from the train tracks to basket shack, to put it in perspective, and we're gonna do some really great things that, that area, to make it a wonderful community to live, work, and play, so stay tuned to that. You're gonna see some great changes in that area. We're working with the community leaders and residents in that area to really create something very special in that community. And we are designing, I think we're almost complete, with a, a new downtown parking deck that we're looking at. We're still making some decisions on council, the size and scope of that, and we have a couple of options there, but we will be moving forward with some increased parking options in downtown Canton. Public Works, what would we do without them? This year alone, they removed a hundred and twenty tons of debris from the streets, with a street sweeper alone. One thousand two hundred and forty-six brush orders were collected, two hundred and thirty-one leaf orders, four hundred and fifty-three garbage recovery orders with Team Clean Canton. They installed and carried for sixty-seven hanging baskets downtown. They lit thirty additional trees downtown, and they maintained, maintained our Tree City USA for the twenty-sixth year in a row. And that's just a few of the things that Public Works has done, and, and all these departments, and I'm not even listing all of our departments and all the things that they've done and accomplished this year. We'd be here all night if I did, but again, our Public Works does a great job for us, and we couldn't, couldn't function without them. Our Police Department, again, continues to do an incredible job keeping us safe and engaging the community in, in, in a wonderful way with their coffee with the cop and their community engagement programs. We're very honored that Chief Merrifield was named our new chief of police and picking up where Chief Mitchell left off and, and going forth with wonderful leadership. He cares about the department, he cares about Canton, and we couldn't be prouder to have him as our chief. A recent update since this presentation, I finished it the other night, Captain Turner was named a deputy police chief, and I hope I didn't steal anyone's thunder, but that was announced last night on, on social media, so I hope I didn't, but. The department also began diversified recruitment strategy this year, and I think you've seen that in the force that has joined us this year. We've added three bicycle patrol trained officers, you'll be seeing those around town. They launched a Drive Safely program, launched a Teen Police Academy, and again, these are just a few of the programs that our police department is doing, and, and thank you all for the work you do to keep us safe and the great work you're doing in the community. So these are just some of the things we did in two thousand nineteen. It was a great year, and the city is in great shape, but let's talk about moving forward, because that's the really exciting stuff. So we're gonna do all that and more going forward. And we're gonna do this by creating a new roadmap for Canton. Council and I and city manager sat down at a retreat in Rome a couple of weeks ago, sat down for two days. I've been to many retreats, my six years involved in the city of Canton, I've never been to a retreat like that where council showed up, ready to work, showed up on time, sleeve, rolled up their sleeves, and we're just dying to get to work, excited to get to work. And our goal is really trying to create a roadmap for Canton, a citywide vision for Canton for, for decades to come. We're gonna think about the whole city, every part of the city, we're gonna take all the plans we have, consolidate them, and look at areas of opportunities, areas that we're challenged at, and, and areas that we can grow in new and exciting ways. It will begin and with citizen engagement. I'll be talking about some of those opportunities coming up. We need everyone in this room, and your neighbors, your friends, your family, your children to be involved in this roadmap. It's your plan, it's not ours, we're gonna be leading it, but it's, it's really your plan, and it's gonna be exciting. We really wanted to enhance connectivity, diversity, and inclusivity, inclusivity throughout the town. We want to establish more efficient processes and planning. We want it to be easy to do business in the city of Canton, we want it to be easy to build in the city of Canton, as long as you adhere to our roadmap, that our citizens have vetted and proved. And we want to market that plan with stakeholders, future stakeholders and partners in the city who want to build the same standards and vision that our citizens want. So really, we want to use the roadmap to get out in front of development and growth, and drive the development and growth that we want for our city and our, and our citizens want. So we're gonna be proactive instead of reactive to every single project that comes along. And we're really anticipating, being very aggressive about this, and we're anticipating a six to eight month process to really presenting the first draft of this roadmap to the citizens. Again, you're gonna be involved in creating it, and we'll be, be vetting that with you and vetting that with all of our partners and development partners. And to do that, we have created, I've created six council committees. These council committees will be working very strongly to, to bring data and information back to feed into the roadmap, and it's gonna be a critical part of the process. And those committees are Water and Sewer chaired by Councilman Nick Estes, Housing Committee chaired by Councilman Sean Tolan, Economic Development by Councilman Brooke Schmidt, Roads and Transportation by Councilwoman Joelle Wilson, Building, Planning, and Zoning, Councilwoman Sandy McGrew, and then Public Safety will be chaired by our Future Ward Two Councilmember. So these council members have been already hit the ground running, as soon as I gave them the assignments, I mean, they were already sending me emails the next day and even that evening, and with these ideas, and like, so I, you know, I'm, I'm pretty, pretty aggressive, but I'm, I'm doing the best I can to keep up with these guys. So they're doing a great job, and I just want to applaud their efforts, and again, you're gonna be hearing a lot from them, and a lot of exciting things going forward. Our boards and commissions, again, the city cannot function with our boards and commissions, and our volunteers are really, really, really powers the city. But we're gonna, just like everything else we're doing in the city, we're gonna take a fresh look at all those, we're gonna reevaluate our boards and commissions for efficiency and relevancy, just make sure we need, because we have a lot of people working on a lot of committees and boards, and, and we're burning a lot of people out, we're asking them to do a lot of things, and we have a lot of people doing, serving a lot of boards and commissions, so we're gonna make sure that we have the right boards and commissions in place. But really gonna just realign all of those to, to really, to really work to serve the goals and taxes of the roadmap, so everything's gonna be aligned, that we're all gonna be on the same page and moving in the same direction, that's why we're calling it a roadmap. And we are gonna be announcing a date for Board Fair in the spring, and that's where we're gonna be bringing in our boards and commissions, and we're gonna have tables set up in this room, and that's where all the citizens can kind of come in who have expressed interest, like, and we've had so many that said, what can we do to help, where can we plug in, what can we do for Canton, where can we serve? And we're gonna have our boards, commissions talking to them, explaining to them what these boards and commissions do, and opportunities for them going forward, how they can help Canton. And this is one way they can plug in going forward. And we really wanna look at our boards and commissions also, because it's an opportunity to enhance diversity, inclusive, inclusivity across all wards in the city. Look at those, we're thinking about aligning those with, with board, with council member terms, so that we're allowing, you know, council members to be more, more involved in the appointment process. And really, this is not something that's gonna happen overnight. Again, we've got a lot of work to do, it'll evolve as the roadmap process evolves, and again, our board and commission members are critical to this process and be involved and every step along the way, so again, team effort with everyone. We're not only gonna be listening to our boards and commissions and council members and citizens, but our, our, our younger, younger generation, our next generation is vitally important to what we're doing. This roadmap is gonna be looking twenty, thirty, forty years down the road, and we're creating a Canton for the next generation. I keep saying we want to give that next generation reasons to love Canton as much as we do, reason to value Canton and protect it as much as we do. Some of you know about my Canton initiative, and we're excited, we're having the first steering committee meeting next week, and really is designed to kind of engage that next generation, hear their thoughts, hear their dreams, hear their ideas for Canton. And we're also gonna be creating a Canton Teen Council, it'll be made up just like this council sitting up here, they'll be hearing the same agenda items we hear, they'll be voting on those items, they'll be giving us their perspective, we just want to hear what they think about the things that we're doing. And we have a steering committee, as I mentioned, made, made up of three members from the, from our teenage citizens, and I made a council member and some, some staff, but I'm honored to not have three, our three teenage steering committee members here of Canton, and that's Ms. Lauren Taylor, who is a senior, please stand, and Ms., Mr. Michael Garcia, and Ms. Sophia Melbourne. So let's give them a hand. This is your future Canton, and, and we're so excited to have them, they've stepped forward and volunteered. They are really gonna be creating this program, they're gonna be creating a Canton Teen Council. We have guidelines in the GMA, but we really don't want to create it for them, they're gonna be doing the work to create it for themselves and kind of create the guidelines, and we're excited to see what they come up with, so. As you know, as some of you heard, we have some, some challenges with our wastewater treatment expansion, we, we are at capacity. It, it is impacting everything that we're doing and thinking about. It is obviously number one on our, our list of priorities. It, some people have been looking at it as a huge challenge, which it is, I'm kind of translating that as into an opportunity, instead of sort of, we're gonna turn, turn crap into Shinola, so. And I think it's a great opportunity, we can hit the pause button, because we have no capacity to offer, but as we, as we grow to, you know, increase our capacity from the current four million gallons a day treating to six million gallons a day, it gives us a chance to kind of stop where we are, gives us a chance to complete our roadmap, it gives us a chance to take that two million gallons that we're gonna be adding, and really decide where you want that two million gallons to go, and that will be defined by the roadmap, and we're not gonna give away that two million gallons to, to people that are projects or development that really will not fit that roadmap or fit our citizens' vision for the roadmap of how Canton is growing. So again, we're gonna get out in front of development and growth, and we're gonna define how the city grows and not developers or, or other entities outside of Canton, so it's an opportunity, I think it's a kind of a blessing in disguise, we have to navigate through it, but again, we have a great council in place and, and team and the city staff that will help us do it. So design for the new plan expansion will be complete by late summer and out for bids. We plan to begin construction in October, and we're, we're anticipated to have the extra capacity to treat six million gallons per day within twenty-four months, so we are gonna be moving forward quickly on this, a little quicker than we had anticipated and others had anticipated. The total estimated construction will take forty-two to forty-eight months. And again, this expansion, this project, just to put it in perspective, will be the single most expensive project the city of Canton has ever embarked upon, but it's gonna be financed, financed by our water and sewer revenues, in other words, the system will pay for it. The system is very robust and financially sound, so it will pay by revenues from the water and sewer system, so city will not be going in any debt for that, it'll be revenue bonds against the system, and so that's good news, we, we can afford to pay for this, and we will be doing that and moving forward with that in a very strategic manner. Etowah River Trail Expansion, a little bit more exciting than, than sewer, so. But sewer does play a role in our trail expansion, so, but we are going, we've already approved and began our trail expansion, extension from Etowah Park East to the Train Trestles. It's approved and will be completed by the end of this year, and that's from, from Etowah Park going east to five seventy-five and the Train Trestles to really the, the edge of the city limits on, on that side. And then we're, we have our designs out for bid from the Heritage Park to Bowling Park Extension, out for bid. We, we think that we'll get that back in May, and we're anticipating a twelve to fifteen month completion on that. And actually, that's why I say the sewer plays a role in this, because we actually have to redo the sewer line from Heritage to Bowling, so we're doing that as part of the water sewer project, and so as we tear up the lines and lay the line back down, the trail will go right on top of that to Bowling Park, so it's a great, great plan. And when we do that expansion, we'll also put a connector into the Waleska Street Bridge that'll bring the, the trail up to the bridge, to the sidewalks, so go down to the Mill and up into downtown Canton. So the trail will connect our sidewalk system and future to the other side of the river. Our goal is to continue our trails, but for now, we'll have, have it all connected. And when we're finished with just this extension, our total trail system, main trail will accommodate five, five K and ten K races plus, so with our existing main trail, which will be over three miles, and then our trails within our parks, we have a great, great race courses. And this is a, a map, there in yellow is the existing trail as is, so you can see how much we're adding to the system. Again, the green extension will be completed by the end of this year. At the end, where the red asterisks will be, there'll be a At the end where the red asterisks will be, there'll be a, um, gazebo, will also be nature trails, mulch trails off of that. That trail will go out in several places overlooked, uh, over the, actually go out over the Etowah River, um, which will be really great. And then the, the blue and red extension, again, is going to Bowling Park and that will start in, probably in May and take 12 to 15 months of a, next spring that should be completed as well. So we're moving fast on this and it's something our residents love and again, it's something that's very special for Canton. So Housing Forum, again, here, here we're starting working on our roadmap. Uh, housing is very critical to our growth and development, like all, all cities throughout the country are challenged with housing, especially affordable housing. Uh, we're having a discussion, we've been having some discussions, uh, but it's something that really is impacting communities across the country. Uh, but we are gonna be bringing our citizens into the, to the dialogue. Uh, we want to know what affordable means to them, um, what it looks like to them. Uh, and, but we're really gonna have a Housing Forum, March 12th, 6 to 8 p.m., mark on your calendars at Canton Theater. We're gonna talk about housing, but we're gonna talk about housing of every type, from public housing, affordable housing, workforce housing up to, to, you know, two acre state housing. What, we want places for our nurses at Northside Hospital to live, we want places for the doctors at Northside Hospital to live. So we're gonna be looking at housing, uh, on every, every, uh, on every level. We're gonna conduct a citywide housing study to understand what our inventory of existing housing is, so we understand what we have, compare that to what we need. And as we put our roadmap into place, understand what kind of overlays or what areas we need to build in, where we have opportunities to build. And we're gonna be looking at the housing diversity we need to, to attract, you know, future, whether it's millennials, Gen X, or knowledge workers that we need, uh, to, to drive the growth of our city in the way that, uh, our citizens want. And we're gonna be looking at, uh, you know, Sean and his committee and several council members have already been working at this and they have been over to Rome and looking at, at, uh, the Rome, uh, Rome Housing Authority and looking at some of the amazing public housing that they're doing. And, and again, this is an example of public housing that they're doing over there, which is really amazing. They have, uh, public housing units, they have solar, uh, panels in them. So they're doing a wonderful job. So we're reaching out and looking at conventional ways of public housing. We're looking at ways that we can, uh, use a Canton Housing Authority to address some of the blighted properties in town and can we put, link those two together and, and move some of our public housing residents into some of those blighted properties and move them to homeowners and, and, and correct that situation at the same time. We're also looking at, you know, really out of the, out of the, out of the box type thinking such as 3D printed homes, uh, that are affordable, that could be really, really cool. And container, uh, units have been converted to single family homes that are very cool that can be built, constructed, moved into place in 99 days. So, uh, we're really kind of looking at all these things and we'll be talking about those at the Housing Forum and, and some of them are very fun and exciting, so. Transportation Forum, we all know that we have some transportation issues and we're gonna be talking about those and looking at those. Uh, Ms. Wilson's already been on the phone with DOT and, uh, April 5th, uh, before the council meeting from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., Jeff Lewis with the Georgia DOT will be here, uh, to discuss, uh, Highway 140 and, uh, five, Highway 5 improvements, system improvements, Highway 20 widening, uh, other system improvements. He'll be answering your questions about what DOT has planned for, uh, for our area, for our city. We want our citizens to be there to ask them questions, ask them the tough questions and, uh, let them know what issues we are having moving around here in Canton because we really need their assistance. We need to let DOT know what issues really we're having here in Canton and how we need to be on top, number one on their priority list, so. And you know that we've been, and when I talked earlier about, uh, our assets and I talked about our past assets, uh, we've done a really great job with, uh, you know, DAF reuse and preserving some of our great buildings such this building in here, Old House, uh, our high school that we turned into a wonderful city hall, we're so excited to be here. Uh, and, uh, the former, uh, elementary school, grammar school and mill office that now is part of Academy in Maine and that project, the, the mill in Etowah and what they're doing there and other things. Um, very excited that last year we were able to take our old police station and we moved the police department into the old city hall, which is the former First Baptist Church, as you can see. And, uh, the Cherokee County Historical Society moved into the old, uh, police department. And I think you know what that building is, but they have very exciting plans to bring a whole Cherokee County History Museum, uh, to that. It's gonna bring a whole, uh, new audience into Canton. And this is some of their plans for the history center for that same building. Uh, you'll be hearing more about this as we go forward, but we're very excited to have this as a showcase in the city of Canton and, uh, to celebrate our history and, uh, bring new people into, to our city as well. So we're doing all these things and again, we couldn't do it without a lot of effort and a lot of people playing a part of this. Uh, and I want to start with some thank yous and I'll, I'll miss people, but, uh, I want to think, start with the city council. Uh, I tell you, they, they are doing an amazing job and they inspire me every day to get out of bed and work a little harder and, and think a little bit more about everything that we're doing and, uh, to try to do better every day and couldn't do it without them. So they really, you don't know how dedicated they are and how committed they are to get this roadmap in place and get us moving, uh, in, in the right direction. Our city manager, Billy Peppers, I tell you, this guy, you know, whether it's 2:00 in the morning, 5:00 p.m. on, on Saturday when his son's playing basketball, or he's, he's in the hospital with a, with a family member, it doesn't matter, you know, question, he'll give you an answer. He's full of knowledge, he's dedicated to this city and he works very hard, we couldn't do it without him. And, uh, we were, we're very fortunate to have him and, uh, it, we are very persistent in getting him here and, and, and efforts have paid off, so thank you. Our city staff, uh, if you're here tonight and you're a staff member, I know a lot of you're standing in the back, but, uh, any other staff member, please stand up, but let's get a round of applause, all of them. They work very hard from, as we said before, from, you know, picking up trash on a daily basis to, to managing our finances and keeping our taxes low to, to all the things in between. They have, have always worked hard and, and being over here a little bit more on daily basis, I'm just amazed at all they do. And, and I know we're asking you to do a lot more than you have even been doing with all these committees or going extra, uh, going an extra mile to, to do more work and get us more information, uh, and serve on these committees and, and to really work to make this roadmap a reality. We couldn't do it without them and we appreciate you, uh, and we're, we're fortunate to have you on our team. And again, our Boards, Commissions and Volunteers, uh, again, we couldn't do it without you. So in the past year, if you've served on a Board or a Commission or you've volunteered for an event or committee, please stand up and we want to recognize you guys as well, so. And last but not least, our Canton citizens. I tell you, we have the best citizens here in the world, uh, and, uh, we, I couldn't imagine a better place to have landed back in 1996 when I kind of drove to Canton by mistake and, uh, just felt, when I drove here, that this is the place that I should be. And I tell you, you have great, great taste when it comes to elections, though, I applaud you for that too. But, but thank you, I thank you for your engagement, uh, you've continued to get more engaged and, and again, I invite you to the table, the process is really all about you, it's not about us, it's certainly not about me. We want to serve you, we want you to really create this plan, we want it to be a roadmap that you're proud of and excited about and, uh, we want to, uh, go on the journey with you together. And really, our goal is, is, as Ms. Henry said before, to kind of create the coolest small town in America. And we're on our way, I think, and we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it sooner rather than later and you're all gonna be a part of it and, uh, and I look forward to the journey. So thank you all and, uh, God bless you.
So at this time, we'll call our February 20th, 2020, uh, council meeting to order. Um, I'll begin with a consideration to approve the agenda. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda? Not entertained a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Schmidt and a second by Mr. Tolan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All members voted for the motion. We don't have any guests in business tonight. Uh, next consideration to approve the minutes, uh, in your packet, you have the council retreat draft minutes from February 4th and 5th, um, and our council meeting draft minutes from February 6th meeting. Uh, are there any changes or additions to those minutes?
So I, I know this must be a trick to see if we're really reading these. I'm, I'm not listed on, uh, in attendance on any. I think the template might need to be.
Were you there?
That would be my only change.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, the, the meeting and the retreat.
He was there, I'll test for him, so. So we'll make that change. Any other changes or additions? Have a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Have a motion to approve as amended by Mr. Estes and a second by Mrs. McGrew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. All members voted for the motion. So next we have informational items and, uh, we have employee recognition and January UCR crime report by, uh, Police Chief Stephen Merrifield.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Peppers. We're going to continue the tradition that we have been doing for quite some time and that's introducing our new officers to the council and to, uh, our citizens. Our new officer, uh, who, uh, just started with us last month is Officer Norman Clanton. Officer Clanton comes to us, already certified from Bartow County Sheriff's Department. Uh, that's tremendous for us because it saves us having to send someone to an academy for four months. It gets them into our field training program faster and he has already begun. I already saw his first, uh, daily observation report, so he is already out on the street and patrolling. Great attitude, as you know, we, we look for people that, that, uh, have the community mindset that we have. When we do our interviews, we ask them, what brought you to us? And most times it's, we follow you on social media and we really enjoy what you do with the community. And, uh, Mr. Clanton, our Officer Clanton, uh, followed that suit. So I'd like to bring him up here and introduce him and congratulate him and welcome to the Canton Police Department. And now for the other end of the spectrum. I didn't really plan this, but it worked out and that is, uh, we're gonna recognize Detective Tom Priest for his 20th year with the City of Canton Police Department. You don't, in today's world, you don't see many people that stay 20 years and 25 years with the same company. Uh, so it shows an awful lot of loyalty and dedication. Excuse me. We're gonna give him a plaque tonight and I was thinking about it on the way here and, uh, it's a, it's something we want to start doing with our people when they start hitting 15, 20, 25 years, we want to bring them up and give them plaques. And I, I was thinking about it and in that plaque, you know, it's a piece of plastic with some words etched on it. And I just want us to take a, a few seconds and kind of look past that. Because what that means in our world is that's 20 years of a lot of nights away from home, from family. That's 20 years of a lot of missed special occasions, birthdays and anniversaries. That's 20 years of some instances seeing the worst of humanity. That's 20 years in some instances, seeing children abused, children hungry, seeing grownups, adults without houses on the street and hungry. And fortunately, it's also 20 years of seeing the best of humanity. It's 20 years of seeing citizens step up and helping their fellow citizens in automobile accidents, crimes in progress. It's 20 years of those golden shifts when you go home and think, I really made a difference today. I really impacted somebody positively today. Uh, and that's what makes this a special job, is those days when you go home and think, I really helped that child, I really did do something today. Uh, so for those 20 years and all the good and bad that goes in that, I'd like to thank Detective Tom Priest for his service, first to humanity in general and then to the citizens of Canton. So thank you, Tom. The, uh, this, there won't be a whole, I, I won't have a whole lot to discuss on this because this really just covers the first month of January, uh, so there's not a lot to compare to in this year to date. But we did look at some things comparing it to January of 2019. We did, uh, our simple assaults, which we, we've discussed before, a lot of that comes in, uh, family, uh, domestic violence, a lot of that comes in, uh, in, in fights between friends and former friends. Those were up 50% between 2019, the difference between what we saw in 2019 and what we saw in 2020. Because of that rise, our violent crime is up just from 20, from January 2019, January 20, just those two months, uh, 21%. Our shoplifting is up 83% different from last year, but it was 21% difference down from December to January. So we were able to drop that 21% just in that one month period of time. And our total, uh, property crimes are down just from January 2019 to January 2020, 22.5% and total crime is down 21.69%. Our accidents were down 12% from December to January and that has a lot to do with our Special Operations Division going to those areas that, uh, our crime analyst says we're having high accident locations and times and they're going out there and working those areas. So they were able to lower that 12%. And with all the rain that we've had, I'm not sure what the next month will show because when it rains and, and gets cold and slick, then we have other issues to deal with. Our calls for service for, uh, January 2020 was 1,932, which was pretty much the same as they were in 2019. We did have, in January 2020, we had 10 entering autos. Uh, what we're seeing on that is most of those occurred in car lots at night, uh, some of our used car lots at night, again, some of those vehicles were unlocked. We did have one vehicle where they actually did break the glass to make entry. What we generally find on that, when they actually break the glass, is because something was left out that they could see inside that's worth their time to break the glass and, and take the chance of, of making noise by breaking glass. So, uh, we did have 10 autos entered, which is the exact same number we had in 2019 at this time. And then last is our Facebook Live will be Thursday, the 27th at 6:00 p.m. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Are there any other announcements at this time? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to our 10-minute public input session. We have two people signed up. Uh, the first one's Stephanie Forte.
Good evening, Council. My name's Stephanie Forte. Uh, you guys might recognize me, I have a couple businesses on Main Street and I have never been more excited to be a part of Main Street and a part of Canton. Uh, so excited that we're actually gonna debut our third business on Main Street, summer of 2020, so we're a few months away. So we'll get to look forward to that cool announcement soon. But I noticed that, um, you guys will be and have been discussing the alcohol ordinance and all of that sort of thing. I have spoken several times on that. I have it so short and sweet, I have one post-it. I really just have three words, uh, and it affects both of my businesses, um, the year trial that, that we had. The year trial that, that we had for the alcohol ordinance before, the restaurant district, whatever we wanted to call it, there was a measurable positive difference. And those are the only three words that I have that apply to both of my businesses. So something to keep in mind when you are having those discussions. I think it was enjoyed responsibly. It created opportunities for me to expand hours for both my businesses, hire more staffing, so it created jobs. Yep, measurable positive difference. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Thomas Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Thomas Weaver and I reside at 131 Old Marietta Hearing. Thank you. You may have noticed that I wasn't here last time. Well, I found myself under the weather, but I kept my head above water, you see. And even though I wasn't able to attend the meetings for the Alcohol Committee that Ms. McGrew so eloquently held, not only here but in Rome, I am thankful all the same that that work is now behind us and we can move forward potentially to a final tentative vote based on that so that my cup too can run us over. And notwithstanding the deluge of all this rain, but I have treaded a lot of water over the years in my walks around the city and I have noticed that that debris has managed to find its way back under the Etowah River Bridge and between the Sandy Hook Shopping Center and the Etowah River Park. So I remember that that was removed, I think, a few months back, but just wanted to bring that to the city manager's attention in case the city wanted to remove it again. And although we can learn to be dismayed and perhaps look down or even look up to the rain that's falling down from the chasm that is the breakdown of the talks between the city and the county regarding SDS Service Delivery Strategy and, and what has played out there, I am, I'm cautiously optimistic all the same that this council, under the leadership of the mayor and with everyone's forward-thinking vision and insight, will find a way to regain the momentum that has been lost, to ensure that those tax dollars are shored up, to get the best positive outcome for the taxpayer in that regard. And lastly, if I may add, I have also noticed that the City of Holly Springs Legislative Council and their municipality have recently chosen to adopt a Second Amendment resolution that favorably viewed the Second Amendment. And I was cautiously optimistic that perhaps this council may, at some point in the future, be able to emulate their success and be able to duplicate that here if that should be something that this council may have appetite for at a later time. But with the torrent of the storm and all the rains recently, I can say that I too will be seeking shelter from the storm. And with that, looking forward to the shelter talks that the mayor's going to host over at the Canton Theater based on his state, his state address, or excuse me, State of the City address, I misspoke. And I would like to chime in on that also. I think that's very forward-thinking and that's something that Canton does need, especially based on the remarks that Chief Merrifield has made regarding the fact that homelessness does exist here in Canton, whether we'd like to admit it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Move forward with the consent agenda and we do have several items on that. I will read those when I'm finished with that. If anyone would like any, one of those items or more pulled off for further discussion, be happy to do so. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. And we have item A, approval of 2020 health insurance benefits renewal with the revised deductibles at a 10% increase. Item B is approval of resolution to adopt capital improvements plan, CIE, and five-year short-term work plan for impact fee program. Item C, approval of proposed resolution to establish cable and video franchise fee. Item D, approval of proposed SP, SPOS 7 budget amendment for ERP Trail System. Item E, approval of proposed impact fee budget amendment for ERP Trail System. And item F, approval to award change order number two to Atkins for construction management services for State Route 20, utility relocation in the amount of $55,380. Those are items on the consent agenda. Would any line, like to remove any item or more for, for the discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Ms. McGrew and a second by Ms. Wilson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Moving right along to old business. Item A, discussion and possible action of case MP 1912-001, master plan amendment for the Bluffs Pod 1 to allow a telecom communication facility, communication tower at 1130 Bluffs Parkway, Cherokee County property. Community Development Manager, Director Ken Patton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. There was a public hearing conducted before City Council at the last meeting. Planning Commission also conducted a public hearing in regards to this master plan amendment for Pod 1 in relation to the allowance of a communication tower facility to be located within that Pod 1. Planning Commission did recommend approval at the public hearing, meeting at the last council meeting. City Council did request some additional information associated with the master plan and conditional use permit, which is the next item on the agenda. Staff did email all of the council members with responses that the staff received in regards to the questions posed by council members two weeks ago. I'm here to answer any questions you might have in regards to this case.
Thank you. So I believe everyone did receive those, that information regarding the questions. Does anyone have questions or everyone did receive that information? Did it answer your questions? Are there any further questions for Mr. Patton?
Motion to approve.
So a motion approved by Ms. Wilson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Estes. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion. So we'll move to item B, discussion and possible action of case CUP 1912-001, conditional use permit, approval to allow communication facility, communication tower at Bluffs Park Pod 1, located 1130 Bluffs Parkway, Cherokee County property. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Again, there was a public hearing conducted before council at its last meeting. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing. Staff did obtain additional information as requested by council members. I'm here to answer any questions you might have in regards to the conditional permit approval and application.
Any questions regarding this conditional use permit?
I'd like to say thank you for getting that information for us.
Part of the job.
Part of the job.
You did a great job.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Ms. McGrew.
Second.
Second by Mr. Estes. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers.
Thank you, Ms. Patton. Item C, discussion and possible action of alcohol ordinance revisions. City Attorney, Mr. Dyer?
Unless you have any questions about it, it's ready to be acted upon with two changes that I would like added to any motion. The more it said, I, I noticed these. And there's a couple of places where there's reference to the municipal court having the authority to suspend or revoke a license. In two places it should say permit. And that's in section 6-149.3, A6 and B4. Just need to change the word license to permit in those two places.
Those would be the only changes to the word.
As, as it was presented at the work session.
Correct. And are we, this would be considered a second reading?
You can act on it tonight.
So any discussion, questions, comments? Yes, Ms. McGrew.
First of all, I wanted to thank the committee for their hard work, for their many hours of input and information. And thank you to Mr. Dyer for his legal advice and to Chief Merrifield for his legal advice and logistics. And Mr. Ingram for his advice on everything. And to Mr. Peppers for helping lead at certain times. I have a question that if this were to pass tonight, when would it take effect?
It would take effect immediately. Now, the licensing changes we made would not apply till next year because we're already, people have already renewed for 2020.
And the way we wrote the ordinance, there's cities supplying the cups, right?
Correct, so until we have the cups.
So we'd have to wait until the cups were.
Correct.
And I had a question about the, the cups. I know that we had discussed them being biodegradable. Is that, did we actually write that into the ordinance that the cups are biodegradable?
I don't think so.
It just said we were providing them.
Could we, should we, or does that need to be in there?
If we, if we provide them, we can make sure that they're biodegradable.
Okay, okay.
I think we should make the city manager a pinky swear.
That's legally enforceable, I'm sure. Do we have any idea how long, if we, if we did approve, how long that would take?
I would imagine we could have cups in within a few weeks at the latest.
So we could just say, as soon as cups are available? I mean, we wouldn't have to put a date on it necessarily.
That's correct.
So we really do have to wait until we get cups?
Well, the ordinance says city provided cup, so.
Because it'll be branded, right?
Right.
I mean, it doesn't have to be, it just has cups. So if you wanted it to start immediately, you could just provide some plastic cups.
Yeah.
I can't promise that the ones we provide tomorrow would be biodegradable, but if you want branded ones, it might take us a couple of weeks to get those in.
I think we decided we can probably wait a couple of weeks to have the right cups. Your decision, so.
I think we should pass it.
So either immediately or we can pass it tonight and have a date like March 30th or April 1st.
You know, the mayor can hold it and not sign it for a few days.
Ain't either bad guys.
And this was my reservation about hanging our hat on cups. When a restaurant runs out of cups and the city doesn't have cups, their hands are tied when a customer asks for a drink to go.
The ordinance covers, you have to have a cup. So if you don't have one, they don't do it.
That came from us, so we just keep extras, plain extras.
Keep extras and then we're providing, how we're doing that if one runs, I think if one restaurant runs low, another one can share. I mean, I think we can.
Voted, Ms. McGrew.
Look at that, again, if future modifications would need to be made, we could take a look at that in the future.
I would mention too, it's going to take us a little bit of time in between your approving it, getting the information to the business owners, making sure they have their signage up, making sure they've got the map up, doing some public notification as well about the changes to the ordinance. So, you know, two weeks fair, you know, we'll just see what we can get in in two weeks and keep the council updated on that.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance with the two changes that Mr. Dyer suggested. I think the cup issue is probably something we don't need to address. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? In the, in the approval of the ordinance?
I, I believe so, yes.
So I, I would like to make that motion, that we approve with the two changes that Mr. Dyer just suggested.
Second.
So a motion to approve with the revisions stated by Attorney, Mr. Dyer, and by Mr. Tolan and a second by Mrs. Schmidt. Any other discussion, questions, comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I will abstain.
Okay. So we have four members voting for the motion and one abstention, so the motion is approved. Moving along to item D, discussion and possible action of proposed T-Mobile cell tower lease agreement. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. If I could provide a summary again, the most recent draft that we have in front of us between T-Mobile and the City of Canton has both parties with the option to non-renew as we requested it. The only caveat is that T-Mobile has requested, if they agree to that, they want the option of two additional five-year renewal periods. And they want us to notify them at least 12 months in advance that we wish to not. If council is agreeable to those conditions, I'll reach back out to T-Mobile and get a formal document prepared and you'll see that on a future agenda.
Pleasure recommendation, recommendation streaming.
Considering that the tank is non-operational right now, I'd recommend to move forward.
Questions or conversation?
And right now, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Dyer. I'm not sure if the council would head nod or if a formal resolution needs to be made to, to agree maybe to have the, approve the mayor to sign the agreement as it is.
I think, I think the motion can be to approve it, authorize the mayor to sign it after, upon your approval or our approval.
And we'll get that draft to the mayor, have it signed, then we'll forward it to T-Mobile.
Agenda says possible action, so I think that would be appropriate if someone is inclined to make that motion, so.
I'll make a motion to approve and allow the mayor to sign once it's been received and approved by the CFO and the city attorney.
Motion to approve the mayor to sign the contract by Mr. Estes and a second by Ms. Wilson. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. New business. We have one item, discussion and possible action of livable centers initiative, community development assistance program 2020 application, Community Development Director, Mr. Ken Patton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. We are bringing this request before mayor and council to take possible action. We received notice approximately the first week in February that Atlanta Regional Commission had opened the application portal for their livable center initiative and community development action plan process. The application deadline is next Friday, February the 28th. We included resolutions for both the LCI and the CDAP within the package. Since we submitted this information, staff has met with Atlanta Regional Commission, ARC staff has indicated that the city would not be eligible for LCI grant. They have changed the program such that LCI, for the most part, is reserved for downtown areas of communities of, within their coverage area. So we would make a community development action plan application if mayor and council approves the resolution. Like I said, the deadline is next Friday, the 28th. We will be asking for a grant. It's an 80/20 match in regards to the grant. Application submitted, we should receive notice from ARC on awards of the grants towards the end of April 1st to May. Expectations are that work would begin after scope and contract is executed with ARC. And generally, you have about 12 months after the contract is executed to complete the work under the grant program.
And this is Marietta Highway from exit 14 to Herndon Lane, if I believe?
It's Marietta Highway, basically all the way up to that old river is about as the corridor for this study.
So it's a study and, and what, can you remind us again what we'd be studying exactly? Is it so?
Well, it's going to look at land uses, transportation, well, within the corridor. We'll be looking at housing affordability options within the corridor, redevelopment options. Marietta Highway is currently in our capital improvements element of our five-year short-term work plan for impact fees. It's shown as improvements to four lanes. Current capacities are deteriorating along the highway corridor. We would look to incorporate some, you will, green infrastructure within, any improvements within the right-of-way of the roadway itself.
Yeah, so again, I think this is a perfect example of, of, you know, a, a study that would play. Yeah, so, again, I think this is a perfect example of, you know, a study that would play into our roadmap, and we certainly know Marietta Highway in South Canton is something we've all talked about needing improvement, and I think this would be a great opportunity to get some assistance in doing that, so. Ms. Wilson?
I just wanted to make sure that this is not affected by service delivery strategy, this grant.
That was going to be my next question, so.
Right now, it is not according to the ARC staff. It could be in the future from what they said this past Tuesday.
So, we need to pass it real quick?
The deadline's next Friday, the twenty-eighth. That's the reason we're asking for action in regards to the resolution, Justice Smith application.
So, if we were making a motion, it's just a motion of support for this, for staff to move forward with these?
It's a motion to approve the resolution of support that the mayor would sign that would be part of the application submitted to ARC.
I think it's very exciting and a great opportunity to get started on this quarter.
Or two questions. So, you mentioned there's a timeframe in which the study needs to take place. What are the, what is the reasonableness of getting the study done in that timeframe first? And then, second, what are the ramifications if, for whatever reason, we don't get it done in the allotted time?
By the application requesting grant instead of technical assistance, we would bring in a third-party outside consultant that would assist the city, city council staff, citizen involvement throughout the process, and ensure that ARC timeframe is satisfied. This is similar to the LCI program and what the City of Canton did with the Canton Forward Plan. Was also, like I said, it's similar to the original LCI for the River Mill District area. There were time limits placed on those, and with the third-party consultant, things move along within the schedule as established by ARC.
Thank you.
And on that note, I would mention that we have the downtown LCI, River Mill LCI plan in place that we did with ARC. We have the Marietta Road Community Initiative that we're doing, placemaking grant, which would connect to Marietta Road, that quarter, we get that underway. It would just be great progress, in my opinion, so it'd be a great opportunity.
I could hardly contain my excitement on this one, and I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution of support for mayor grant to sign.
Second.
So, a motion by Ms. Schmidt and a second by Ms. McGrew.
Your turn.
Okay, Ms. Wilson's the last one, so I'll give this one to Ms. McGrew, so. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Very excited about that. Mr. Peppers? Tell us something good.
I just have one item for you tonight. We received a request to review whether or not a distillery could be a use within the mill on Etowah at one fifty-one Railroad Street. The word "distillery" was used in their letter of intent on the project, but it was not listed in the table of permitted uses within the master plan development. Council can approve the use of that terminology within that table of uses, but it would require a text amendment. So, our request to council would be that the city council would consider having that come directly to the council as opposed to going through the process, since it appears that that was their desire in their letter of intent, but it was left off of the actual conditional master plan approval for that development. If we did that, we could bring that to council in March as opposed to having them apply in March, having to go to the Planning Commission in April and having it come to the council in May.
And is this related to that same item that we approved for Mr. Hodge? A few, was it that one? I forget the.
That's a distributor.
That was a distributor.
A distributor, where, okay.
This would allow a manufacturer.
Okay, okay, understood.
And this, so would we, would you need action to not to vote? To?
No, just.
Yes, just to vote to direct the staff to advertise the public hearing.
Bring the text amendment.
The timing problem is the advertisement for the public hearing at your second March meeting. That has to happen soon.
So, in this process, what we would do is we would make presentation to council at the first meeting in March, have the public hearing at the second meeting for the text amendment, and you could act on it that night.
Okay. So, we don't need to vote?
Yes, just a motion and a vote to direct the staff to schedule the public hearing at whatever March date that is.
It appears was our mistake of leaving it out, so I'm fine with that.
Motion to direct staff to move forward with advertising.
Second.
So, was that the motion we needed to make?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, motion to move forward advertising the public hearing, and a second by Ms. Schmidt. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor's report, I think I've had enough to say for this evening, so. I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session, discuss litigation, personnel, and real estate.
Motion to adjourn to executive session, second.
So, could you?
To discuss litigation, personnel, and real estate.
Okay.
I will second that, Mr. Estes.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Estes, a second by Mr. Tolan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? And we are adjourned to executive session.
Okay, good job, everybody.